ब्रिटिश ऑफ दिस सिस्टम
मी अंदर के दोनों इस्तात्रा
I am so happy to be with you all
मी अंदर तो वाटून नाक चाला संतोष
And I think that I can go over here in this area for the marriage of class
मारी मुंडी पान्तनो लो मारी संदीप कारी विवाहान्य के वच्चन नेनु
And I had a desire to come again
मल्लक मारिक सर रावल नाशिकली गुणानु अंदिके वच्चनु
And God made a way for me to just come over here
मारीला रावटान्य के प्रभु माक मारिक समयान्न निच्छडु
Not only that but I thank the Lord for him
अंदिकोस्मे काद इतनो कोस्मे गोड देवन स्वतिस्तनानु
That we are only because of the message we are clothed
इंदिकेंड वर्तमानानु बट्टे मी एम क्लोज का कलिगुणामु
This message brought us to clothes
ई वर्तमानमे मामले तग्र चेसिन्दी
So may God bless
मारी देवुड़ देवुड़ आता आयनी मारी देविंचनु गाका
His family, his congregation
आयना कुटुम्मान्य
And at the same time I was thanked Pastor Benigar
पास्तर बेन्नी गारी कोस्मे गोड देवन
Because he is the person, he is just compelling me
अतदेनु नु वोथिक चेस्याडु निजानिकी तन्नितु कोस्म
That he had to give it in this place
मारी ई प्लेस लो मेरो कोटाल यवाल यवाल नु मामले वोथिर जेसिन्दा आयनी
Many times he will put a pressure upon this old man
मारी कोनिसार लो ई अक्का वृद्धन पाइन आयवाल आविदंका वोथिक जेस्तावन्नारु
May God bless you
देवुड़ मामले देविंचनु गाका
And God bless the pastors also
इकरोचना सेवुकल अंदर कोडा देव मंदनालु
All of you
मी अंदर कोडना वंदनालु शुभमलु
I thank the Lord once more time
मारिक सारी प्रभु नेनु स्वतिस्तनानु
You pray for us
माकोस्म मीर प्रादिन्छन्दी
I am very much tired, very much
निजानिकै त नेनु इरोज़ भाग अलिष्पयानु
You have to believe that even I don't have strength to stand right
इरिंग अंत चप्पल अंड निलवट्टा निको ओपी कोड लेनंतका इरोज़ नन तिरिग्यालिष्पयानु
First thing due to my age
इंदिकेंड इंदिलो मधतकारनु ना वैस आइते
I completed eighty years
नेनु यनबे द्याट्कुन वाडिनी
And at the same time
मारी अलागे
Just all the time meetings and meetings and meetings
मारी कदा कोदरोजलुका मारी वर्षने कोटालु 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 तालिष्पयानु
But anyhow I thought that I will just take rest
मारी निजानिकी नेनु अलिष्पय विश्वांति स्कुन्दा उनकुन्दा
But I believe that we are we are having a fellowship that is the place of our race
आमीन निजानिकी निसमयन विश्वांति अंदांते मानो सहवासन चेटीवे निसमयन विश्वांति पिल्ला
And now it is already late
मारी निजान कुछ वालिस्मय इंद मीटिंग इप्पडिके
It is ten five नाइन, टेन, नाइन फाइव
इप्पड त्रमिद आयनी समय
Generally I preach for two hours
यानला सहजंग गए त नेनु रोडिगाट्ल पाइन बोधिस्तानु
Now since it is late I will not just speak much
मारी इप्पडिके वालिस्मय निवनक मारी नेकु समय आनु तिसकोटल एदिरोचु
But anyhow just as the Lord needs us
एदमयना प्रभु माले नलान्डी पिस्ताला वेलदाम आमीन
God bless one of you
देवुड़ मामले अंदन्नी देविंचनु गाका
I am bringing the greetings and love from the little church from Mumbai
मोम्बाइल उन्न मा चिन्न संगवन चुकोडा मी अंदर किना वंदनालु शुभमलु
Our Mumbai people they know Pastor Sandeep
मारी मोम्बाइल उन्न मा संगसंगानिकै त संदीप गार देल्सु
They gave regards and love to you and everyone
वारु वारी प्रेमनु गोडान्य तेली जेसुनारु
This today I will just speak very simple message
ताइनकाल वक्क चिन्न वर्तमान
And simple
वक्क चिन्न वर्तमान
And also the deep
चिन्न देखानी लोत आयनी
For the grounded message believers
मारी वर्तमान लो उन्न वारीकै त
You will not be going empty handed
वच्चन वारु मेरोज़ कालीकै त वेलरपिल्लार
God will give you something
तप्पुकोण देवुड़ मेक किरोज़ कुच्चन दाईचेस्याडु
And the newcomer God will give you something
अलाकोत्तक वच्चन वारी कोडा देवुड़ मेक कुन्न दाईचेस्याडु
Because we are that I am not just like a very educated person
इंदिकेंड नेनु अंत तेली वित्याटलो चदु कलिगन वाणिकादु
I am having a very little education that is the reason I cannot go
नाकु चाला तक्कुव चदु वंदे अंदिकरण नेनु आठले कु पाइकल्लेक्पयानु
But anyhow for keeping this thing in mind about the little ones and newcomers
मारी कोत्तक वच्चन वारनी मारी चिन्न पिल्लल्नी मारी वंदन्नी गोडान्य मानसले बट्टुकुन इस वाक्य चप्पडल्चुना
I would like to take a small subject
वक्क चिन्न अम्शान्ति स्कुन्न वाक्यानु बोधिंचु गोर्थनानु
That is in Luke chapter seventeen
लुकासु वर्त पदिहेड़ वत्ताइम लनुची
And from verse twenty on
यरवय वच्चन नुच चप्पल कुन्दनानु
And if you like to just note down some of the things
रास्को लुन्नु रास्को तरवत चदुको चल लुकासु वर्त पदिहेड़ वत्ताइम यरवय वच्चन नुची
Our request Pastor Sandeep to read from twenty to twenty six
लुकासु वर्त पदिहेड़ वत्ताइम यरवेन नुची यरवय आरव वच्चन अलावरको यरवेयेड़ वरको देवुड़ राज्यमे इप्पुर वच्चन नानी परिसैल आयन नडिगिन पुडो आयन देवुड़ राज्यम पत्तिक्षमगरादु इंदिकरनका इदिगो देवुण राज्य मीमच्यन उन्न दिकनका इदिगो इकड़नानी अदिगो अकड़नानी चेप्पी बीलु पड़दनी वारीकी वत्तरमिच्छनु मारी यो आयन तन शिष्यलु तो इट्लन नेनु मनुष्य कुमारुड़ देनमुल लो वक्क देनमु चोड़बलननी मेरु कोरु देनमुल वच्चन गानी मेरु आ देनमुन चोड़रु वारु इदिगो इकड़नानी अदिगो अकड़नानी मीतो चेप्पन्याडला वेल्लकुडी वेम्बडिंपकुडी आकाश्सम किन्दा वक्क दिक्कनुंडी मेरपु मेरसी आकाश्सम किन्दा मारियो कदिक्कन केलागु प्रकाशिच्छनो अलागुन नेनु मनुष्य कुमारुड़ तन देनमुन आउंदनु आइते मुंडुका आयन अनेक हिमसलु पन्दी ई तरम वारी चेता उपायक्षम्प बढ़बलनु नवाहु देनमुल लो चरिगिन अट्लो मनुष्य कुमारुड़ देनमुल लो नुच चरिगु नवाहु वाडलो निकी वेल्लिना देनमु वारको जन्नल तिनुचु त्रागुचु पिंडलाडुचु पिंडल किय बढ़चु नुंडेरी अंतलो जनपालयम वच्ची वारन अंदरनी नाशनम वच्चेसनु
Also Book of Hebrew chapter eleven
अलागे हिब्रील क्रासन पत्रिका पदकुण्डवत्ताइम
We will read seven words
येड़ वच्चन चदु कुन्दा हिब्रील क्रासन पत्रिका पदकुण्डवत्ताइम येड़ वच्चन विश्वासमुन बट्टीन नवाहु अदि वरको चोडनी संगतुल नगुर्ची देवुड़ चेता हेचरिंपबडी बाय बक्तुल कलवाडी तन इन्टिमारी रक्षणकोरको वक्क वाडनु सिद्धमु चेस्कुनेनु त अंदुवन आतदु लोकम्यद नैरस्तापन चेसी विश्वासमुन कलुकु बट्टु नीतिकी वारसुडायनु
May God bless you worship
देवुड़ मामले देविंचनु गाका चिन्न प्रादन जेस्कुन्दा
Father God, thank you very much Though we are tired and weary but I have brought us to Thine house and we believe that You are in our midst now Yes And we pray since we have radio word we pray that will bless the name of Your word and give us the bread of life help in my all weaknesses and feeble body Father God gave me the strength from above Fill me with Your Holy Spirit and speak to me, speak to my brothers and little ones too We pray for all the ministers those who are present Lord bless them, bless their home churches, bless their ministry too that is my prayer thank You once again for Pastor Sandeep Lord Jesus Christ and He opened the door I pray that will bless Him in this area and other places also make use of Him My prayer by faith I ask You in Jesus' name I pray
आमीन
You may be seated The message will be very, very simple
वर्तमानु चाला चाला मारी सादारणमय इंदी
Amen So it will not be difficult for you to understand
मारी मीके अदन जेस्पडु माता कष्टमय गादु पिल्लार
Here we can see Jesus Christ was just in quar about buying the scribe and verses when the kingdom of God should come
इकरो परिसैलु सदु केले मान सदु कुन्न चोटा प्रभु नडुचुनार हरलोक राज्यम इप्पुर वस्सन ने नडुतुनार आयनी
Wait a minute After the fall of a man
मानक देल्सु मानोडु पडिपयन तरवता
That was God had established His kingdom upon the face of the
देवुड़ तन राज्यानी ई भूमेदा स्थापिच्छु गोर्चनाडु
And we can see in the garden of Eden
इदारिकी एदेन तोटलो मान वच्चनु
That whole garden was or maybe this globe was a paradise
ई भूमंत गोड एदेन तोटलो ई वक्क अंदमयना परदेसलागा वंद पिल्लार
And that was the kingdom of God established on the face of the
अदि भूमेदनक स्वर्गमलागा देवुण अक्का राज्यम भूमेदा अकड़ा स्थापिच्छु बड़ु
And we can see that kingdom was lost
मारी मानक देल्सु आ देवुण राज्यम नेनु पडिपयन पुड
But before losing that kingdom
कान्न इदिगो पडिपोट निको मुंडुकाने
When God watches in that kingdom
चोरण आ देवुण राज्यमलो देवुड़ अकड़ा उन्न पुडे
Adam, his wife
आधामु आयन भारिया
And not only they have got all the wild animals
आधा मावले काद अकड़ना अन्नी जन्तुलु कोडा
I never seen that wild animals were angry or something like that
मारी आ जन्तुल्लो कॉपमी ट्वेंटी गेम लेवपिल्लार पुडंदलो
What is that? All they were living in the harmony
जन्तुल अन्नी कोडा चाला समतुल्यंग अन्नी जिविस्तावनी वक्क दानु कोटी
I believe that in God's kingdom there is a love, peace, joy, happiness
आ देवुण राज्यमलो प्रेम, संतोष, समाधान अन्नी कलिचनु पिल्ला
In that kingdom
मारी आ राज्यमलो
All the animals
अन्नी जन्तुलु कोड अकड़ा
Those who are living today in all these forests, tiger, lion, wolf and all
मान इप्पुर जूसे ईपुर ई सिमहमु नक्का ई जन्तुलु ई वन्नी पुलु
They were not wild
अप्पुड़ अभि क्रोरजन्तुल गलिव आधाम पडिपोट निको मुंडु
One day just I was preaching it I thought that we said that wild beast
इरोज़ नन कोण्टा क्रोरजन्तुव नाम पलकुताउन्तान गदा जन्तुलु गुरिची
Then I went to the book of Genesis
मारी नेनु प्रकणनकान्नो ले चदुतावन्नानु
And I tried to find out whether God created the wild animal
नेनु निजानिकी कनुकालकुन्दा मान क्रोरजन्तु क्रोरजन्तु अंडांगदा असली क्रोरमानु जन्तुलु तेवुण निजंक चेस्याडु
Wild, jungly
आ अडविजन्तु, क्रोरजन्तु
God never made the tons of thistles
देवुड़ इप्पुर गोडा ई मुल्लुचेट्लो ई दोप्पल इटान्ड चेलेदु पिल्लार
It is because of the third scale so that is the thing this wheat and the tons of thistles they appear
मनुष्य पापोलो पडिपोटम वल्लई कल्पमक्कलु पिच्चमक्कलु अलागे ई मुल्ली वन्नी वच्चनी लेखपोते लेवपिल्लार ई वन्नी मुंडु पापानिकी मुंडु
So wait a minute when God created all the animals
मानक देल्सु देवुड़ अप्पुर मधतलो तोटलो अन्नी जन्तुलु चेस्नपुडु
He created all the tripping things and the birds and the fishes and
माके चेस्याडु, चक्का चप्पन चेस्याडु, पक्षलागे ग्रे चेस्याडु
And with that one he made another all these forfeited beasts
आ नालुकु सितुश्पाद जन्तुलु चेस्कुन्द अच्छ्याडु
Just like a cow, goat and all
अलागे मेका लेगदांते आ अवु अतु अन्नी जन्तुलु पुड चेस्कुन्द अच्छ्याडु
Lion, lioness and tiger and wolf and everyone
मारी आडसी मुहमु लेदांते आ नक्कलकानी लेदांत अन्नी जन्तुलु चेस्कुन्द अच्छ्याडु
They were not wild
अप्पुड़ आयन चेस्नपुड अभि क्रोरजन्तुल गलेदु पिल्लार जागतु
We can see they were living in the kingdom of God
आ देवुण राज्यमलो उन्न पुडु अभि क्रोरजन्तुल गलेव पुडु
But that kingdom was lost
चोरण आइते मारा अट्वन्ट जीवलको उन्न आ राज्यम नेनु तरवत तरवत पडिपयन
And after the fall
पडिपयन तरवता
Everything is longing for the kingdom of God to come
पडिपयन तरवता अन्नी कोडा मल्ला मधत राज्यकोरको मधत सितिकोरको ताहे कलिगुन्नाय
For that one even this earth is groaning
इकर बाइबल ले जप्तुन्दे सुष्टिकोडा अदि मुरपेट्चु उन्दात
We are also groaning
मानंकोडा मुरपेट्चु उन्न
For what reason? Where is the kingdom of God?
आ देवुण राज्यम इप्पुर वस्सुन्दी देवुण राज्यम इप्पुर वस्सुन्दी
Because we are tired of this kingdom
इंदिकेंड ई राज्यतम मान अलिष्पयाम्पिल्ला
All throughout the world those who are all the kingdoms
मारी ई भूमेदन अन्नी राज्यालु कोडा
Are no more good
ई वन्नी मंचु कादु मानक देल्सु
No peace, no joy
इंदिकेंड ई राज्यालु एकड़े कोड संतोष लेदि, शांति लेदि, समाधान
Everybody it is killing a herd of males and girls and all series
एकड़ चुस्ना नरुकोटु, चंपुकोटु मनुष्यन मनुष्य द्वेषिंच्छु कोटु अन्नी मेपिल्लार
And we can see that God saw the earth has completely become wild
देवुड़ इप्पुर एत अमनुष्य पडिपयन तरवत चुस्याडु ई भूमंत गोडा क्रोरंगा अडिविलागमारिपयन
And Bible says all flesh must corrupt
बाइबल चेप्तुन्दे समस्त सरीरु चेडिपयन नारन चेप्तुन्दे
Then God thought that I want to destroy all the
लजान देवुड़ अरुकुन्नाडु भूमि चेडिपयन तरवत असला चेडिपयन भूमि नासनन जेद्दामले अनुकुन्नाडात
Because she was a bound
इंदिकेंड पापम नेनु अंत पेरिगिपयन देवुण नासनन जेद्दाम अनुकुन्नाड
It was a climax of the seed
ओका निजानिकी परिसिद्ध वच्चन्दी इकर पापान्न देवुड़ संगिन्सले रसिद्ध वच्चन अपुड
And here Jesus Christ told
मारी देवुड़ आस्तितिन गुरुच्च पिस्पर
It was in the days of Noah
अदि देल्सु मानक नवाहु देनमुल उन्न अटु गानी
So shortly beyond the days of the sun up can't be revealed
मनुष्य कुमारुड़ पत्तिक्षमय देनालु गोड वन्डा पोटनान्न चेप्ता उन्न अपिल्लार
I can see the world is completely full of all evil things
माव देल्सु भूमंत गोड चेडुत निंडिपयन अपुडन नवाहु देनालु
All the seed is just growing
ओ अंत पापम अंत गोड पेरिगुतावन्ना रोज़लो
We can see all everywhere now our Indian government has just passed the law that man with a man they can marry
मान बारदेसु गोड चट्टानु चेसिन्दी अंदांते मगवालु मगवालु पिलिजेस्कोचन चट्टान नम्म चिन्द पिल्लार
Woman can marry the woman
स्त्री स्त्रीनी पिलिजेस्कोचन नीमानिच्छन्दी
Wait a minute God they were made two men
मानक देल्सु देवुड़ इप्पुर गोड एदेन तोटलो इद्र मगवालन चेलेद
God made man and the woman
देवुड़ स्त्रीनी पुरुषुनी आडा मगदिका चेस्याडु गानी इद्र आलवाले इद्र मगवाला चेलेद
That is God's plan man and woman
देवुड़ पनालिका देव स्त्री पुरुषुडु अदि देवुड़ पनालिका
Male and female
पुरुषुडु स्त्री अदि देवुड़ पनालिका
That they should multiply
वालु वालु समृद्धि फलमंत चेबडाल
You can see the all the hearts of the man were wicked and wicked
इरोचुन्दे मनुष्यल आलोचलो तालम्पुल अन्नी चेडिपयन कुल्लिपोतावन्ने पिल्लार
What they can do with a man with a man marrying
असल निजानिकी मगवाड़ु मगवाड़ु पिलिजेस्कुन निजस्तार पिल्लार
Are the woman marrying the woman
असल स्त्री स्त्री पिलिजेस्कुन निजस्तदी
Let them marry at the young age and die at the old age
तरे वक्क वालु कोररुकुन्न अपुडे पिलिजेस्कुन अनुकुन्दा मसला इन्न चेन्नीपयन अनुकुन्दा यो सादिस्तार
Is there any use of that marriage?
आ पिलिवाल निजानिकी एवं नोपयोगमुंदा आड़ा मगवाड़ु
But this is the device that demonic mind had just invented all this
असल इकमंड तालम्पुल मनुष्यल केंदु कोस्तन अंदांते सातानु अदियम वालु लापुल दूरितुन्दे आलोचल्लेसन
Because the Bible says in Romans chapter one
इंदिकेंड रोमपत्रिकी एम्दु आद्यावल बाइबल चेप्तुन्दी
The time came that they have lost the natural affection
बाइबल रोमपत्रिक चेप्तुन्दी मनुष्यल सहजमयन प्रेमन ले कुल्पोतावन्ना आरु
In the days of law
लोध देनालु उन्न अटु गानी
Sodom was sodomized
सोदमा पापम पेरिगिपोतावन्दी
All man with a man, woman with a woman
मगवालु मगवालु त आड़वालु आड़वालु त अभाच्चमयु चेस्न
In our country the law has been passed now
मनुदेस्सलो गोड चट्टानु सास्त्रमय इंदिरोचु
Brothers, where we are going?
निजानिकी बाग सहोरला सहोदिम
Because the Lord Jesus Christ already told that as it was in the days of
मानक इक प्रभु चेप्पु उन्न आडु लोथु देनमुल वले इप्पुर चरिगुन्न वाणी
Noah's time, all the flesh was corrupt
नवाहु देनमुल लो समस्त सरीरु चेडिपयन नारन बाइबल चेप्ता
God is not happy with this
देवुड़ लोकन्तो तुप्तिगले डपुड
So God thought that to destroy the whole world
असल देवुड़ अनुकुन्नाडु नवाहु देनालु भूमि नासनन जेद्दाम अनुकुन्नाड
God said we are looking upon the face of the
असल भूमि चोस्ताउन्दे देवुड़ कॉपमस्तावन्दी
And Bible says
लेखन चेप्ता उन्दी
God repented
आइते देवुड़ पच्चत्ता पड़द
That's why I created this sugar beet
देवुड़ असल इंदुकी मानुमुण्ड चेस्याना अनि बादपड्डाड
God repented
देवुड़ इंतो दुक्कपड्डाड
That's why I created this
असल इंदुकी भूमि चेस्यान इंदुकी मानुमुण्ड चेस्यान
And he thought I will destroy the whole world
असल ई भूमि ने समस्त नासनन जेद्दा अनुकुन्नाड
Wait a minute that world was destroyed by water
मानक देल्सु आलोकान्न देवुड़ नुट्टीतो नासनन जेस्याड
I got the book
मानक उस्कुन्दी About the Noah's ark If you want you can just go in your YouTube ईर YouTube ले केले चुस्को वच्च
And you type Noah's ark
YouTube ले केले नवाहु आर्कु लोक नवाहु वाडनु कुन्न छोड्यो
So you can get the reality
इप्पुर गोडनु दानी पुडु दाने अख्क निजानिको नान छोड्यो
That Noah's ark has been found on Mount Kararat
आरारा बाइबल दाल मेदा ईरोज़ कोड नवाहु वाडा कनुकुड़ बढ़िदु पिल्लार
It is above sea level
मान इंतकावन्दांते समृद्धि चाला अदि उन्न चाला इत्तलो दुरिक्न नवाहु वाडा
Thirty thousand eight hundred feet
पदमूड़ वेला यनिमिति वंदला अडुगला इत्तलो वक्क कण्डल्लो दुरिक्न वाडा
Thirty thousand eight hundred feet on a mount Kararat it is rest
पदमूड़ वेला यनिमिति वंदला अडुगला इत्तलो आ नवाहु वाडा दुरिक्न
And snowfall comes cover that
आ मंचु अवन्नी पडिदान मेदा पडिकपेस्नी वाडा
But when the snow is melted you can see some of that you can go inside
आ तरवता मंच अंत करिगिपयन अंताइपयन तरवता मान कुन्न कुन्न संदर्भाले छोड़ो छिप्डु कोड
So the scientists will say
साइंटिस्ट अंत उन्नारु
Hey, from where water will come?
आरोज़ नवाहु ताइमल अंत उन्नारु अरे नवाहु वाडलो चेप्पनाट्य नीलेकु वर्षम
From where the water will come?
वर्षम एकड़नु चिदन डुतनार आरोज़
How the whole world is going to be drawn?
नवाहु भूमंत नासनन आयदांतन नाव कदा यक्कलावस्तदी
That is not a question
आइते नवाहु अन्न ना प्रश्न
When God says He will do it
देवुड़ चेप्पयाडु वंदे जरिगिन चित्तेर्त
Because his share was seven An hour can pass away but my word shall never
इंदिकेंड बाइबल चेप्तुन्दे आकाश्सम भूमि गतिच्छना आयनल माटल एमात्रन गतिच्छु
So God destroyed the whole world by water
आरोज़ देवुड़ लोकन्नी नीट्टो नासनन जेस्याड
In the Bible it is written
अदि लेखनालु रायबर्दन निस्मयन
That was settled down on the mountain
अंदिके आ वाडलो न्यू वाड तेलिपयन आ वाडा नेलो तेलिपयन वाडा कण्डल्लो मेदा दुरिक्न इरोज़
In a Chinese boat
आ चाइना अक्का वालपुस्तकालो
Which is called the Fahim In that one also it has been described
आ फाहिनी आ पुस्तकुमलो गोड चाइना वालपुस्तकुमलो आ वाड गुरुच्च रास्तार पिल्लार
So believe that
मान निसमन नम्मचन नम्मच
In that day, in those days the world was completely corrupt
मारी नवाहु देनालु भूमंत चेडिपयन नारज
And we can see the shibboleth shibboleth things are happening in our day
ईरोज़ मनमच्छलो गोड अदेद देनालु चरितम मान कुन्न छोड्यो
We can see when the shibboleth things are happening
अदेपरिसिद्ध मनमच्छलो जरिगुतन अपुड मान कुन्न चोस्त
Again the question is come about the destroying the world
मारी देवुड़ बाय वाटर बट बाय फायर मारी ईरोज़ कोड पापान्न पेरिगुतन अपुड देवुड़ चूसान मानसलो अदेप्रश्न मल्ला भूमि नासनन जेद्दाम
When God says he will do it
देवुड़ चेप्पयाडु वंदे जरिगिन चित्तेर्त
Because we see it
इंतकांड नवाहु देनालु वले पापम पेरिगुता पेरिगुता पेरिगिपोतावन्दी
But one thing I want to tell you
मारी आइते पक्विश्न चप्पल
When God thought of destroying the whole world
मारी देवुड़ भूमि नासनन जेद्दामु अननुकुन्दन अपुड
Brothers, a winner that he cannot destroy unless he gives the grace
देवुड़ नासनन जेद्दा निको मुंडु रक्षिच्छु बड़े वारीकी क्रपण कोड इस्तरपिल्ला
And the prophet brought the message
अकड़ोक प्रभक्त मच्ची वालकी नासनन गुरुच्च हेचरिंचे वर्तमान तिसकोचड
Before bringing the judgment, God bring the grace
तीरपु एवट निको मुंडु देवुड़ मुंडु क्रपण इस्साड पिल्लार Without the grace, kripa lekunda
He cannot break the judgment
आयन तीरपु मानमेदा प्रकटिंच्छले पिल्लार
So we have to see that time
मावट मान कुन्न छोड़ाले समय
God's anger was increased
देवुड़ आ क्रपय अक्का देवुण अक्का क्रपा हस्सम अकड़ुन्दी
The seed was just, it was a climax
पापम पेरिगी पेरिगी पराकास्तिक चेटुन्द समय
The seed was growing and growing
पापम अलापेरिगुतु पेरिगुतुन टाइम लो देनालु
But the Bible says
आइते लेखन चेप्तुन्दी
When the seed grown
पापम पेरिगुछु उन्न पुड
When seed comes up and up
क्रपा तीरपु अंते मिंची पेरिगुतुन्द पिल्लार
If the seed is a bounty
अंदा पापम एकड़ा विस्तरिच्छनो
If it is going hundreds
पापम वंत वंद रेट्ल पेरिगिनागन
The grace of God will go
बाइबल चेप्तुन्दी पापम एकड़ा विस्तरिच्छनो क्रपा अकड़ा परमितम का विस्तरिच्छन
If the seed will go to mine
अलागे ईरोज़ कोड चिवरदेनालु पापम पेरिगुतुन उन्न अच्छु
Grace of God will go
आयन गानी पापान्न मिंची गोड देवुड़ क्रपुको इरोज़ उन्द पिल्लार
We must thank the Lord
ईरोज़ देवुड़ को दान कोस्म मान वंदनाल तेली चेयाल
When God wanted to destroy the world
ईरोज़ कोड देवुड़ लोकन्नी नासनन जेद्दाम अनुकुन्नाकानी
Once seen a bound
पापम पेरिगुतुन अपुड
There is the message of grace
आइते रक्षिस्से पट्टा निकी ईरोज़ क्रपण कोड पेरिगुतुन्द पिल्लार
There is the message of grace
रक्षिच्छु बड़े वर्तमानम ईरोज़ उन्द क्रपा वर्तमानम उन्द ईरोज़
That is the most important thing for you and me
ईरोज़ नीकुनाक विल्वेन्दी अंदांते आ क्रपा वर्तमानम विल्वेन्दी रोज
We, we, we make a diagram of this seven virtues
मारी आ परिपोन्न मानवुन अक्का आ अक्का मान वम्मन चुस्योन्न
Which is the last portion
आ परिपोन्न मानवुन सुरुपुमलो चित्तचिवरदेन्दी पिल्लार
It is a love
आ चिवरदेन्दी तालारायन्ति प्रेम
And the grace
प्रेम अंति क्रपय पिल्लार
Prophet told it is a love and the grace
रवत अंत उन्न अदि प्रेम आ मारियो क्रपानी
That is the message of love
अदि प्रेम वर्तमानम
That is the message of grace
अदि क्रपा वर्तमानम गोड पिल्लार
Prophet said Wherever the love is there has to be a grace and there has to be a grace there has to be a love
प्रेमम उन्दांते अकड़ा दयम क्रपम उन्न आले क्रपम उन्दांते प्रेम उन्त अपिल्लार
So we are living in such a wicked day
निजानिकी ईरोज़ मान वच्चाला चट्टदेनालु उन्न
But I am so happy
आइते नेनु इन्को देनको संतोष जेस्कुन
I have one of you
आइते मीलो
That God loved your mission
देवुड़ ईट्वंदे पापम मच्छलो गोड निन्नु नन्नु प्रेमिच आलु पड्ड दिसकोचड़ा क्रपतो
Before the world could
ई चिवरदेनालु भूमि नासनन जेद्दा निको मुंडुका
Before
ई लोकन्नी अग्रितो नासनन जेद्दा निको मुंडुका
God sent the message of
प्रभु अक्का क्रपा वर्तमानम निकोस्म पंपिच
The message of the grace is the highest
नी ऐत्त क्रपान्डन नी ऐत्त बट्टा निकी सिद्धपर्चन त क्रपण इस्सन
Above the seed
पापान्न मिंचनु जीविच्छेद्दा क्रपण इस्सन ई पापान्न पायरनु जीविच्छेद्दा क्रपण इस्सन
All everything
पापान्निकी पायगा चेद्दप चेद्दप लोकन्नीकी पायगा
There is no greater message than the grace
क्रपणम मिंचन वर्तमानम लेदु पिल्लार
So we can see the days of Noah
मान ईरोज़ नवाहु देनालु मल्ला छोड्यो
People were busy, busy, busy
एंड नवाहु देनालु ईरोज़ कोड पजले टुपयन
We busy, busy
So much busy
कैंतो बिजी एपोतन
बाइबल से
बाइबल चेप्तुन्दी They were eating
वारु तिनुच्छन नार आरोज़लो
Drinking
तागुच्छन नारु
Planting
नाट्च्छन नारु
Building
बिल्डिंग्स कट्टुन नारु
Giving marriages
पिलिजेस्कुन्दन नारु
Who told that we don't need that?
आई वोधन एवर कान चेप्पयार
We need eating, every day we have to eat
जेंट आवस्तुन्दे अदर रोज़ के वाल पिल्लार
Every day we have to do that
मान पतिरोज़ चेयाल
We have to build the building
मान मान विल कट्टुकोवाल
We have to plant the plants
मान मक्कल नाट्कोवाल
Brothers, that is not the problem
मारा दिकादु समस्य अकड़ा
But we can see in the time of Noah
नवाहु देनालु मान कुन्न चुस्ते
People, their mind and everything was on the building
हनि
Planting and all these things
वालु तिनटमु तागटमु अधिकादु वालु समस्य असल वालु माइंडेन अनिमतुस्पिल्ला अधिवत प्रॉब्लम आरोज
They did not have a reason for the to think about their spiritual
वालकी वीट गुरुच्च आलोचिस्तन नार गानी आत्मय संगतुल गुरुच्च आलोचिच्छत्ता समय उन्न लेदा आरोज
Because they were so busy, so busy
वाले इंतो बिजी उन्न आरोज़ इंतो बिजी गाउन्न
Yes
आणि इक दमारी
The bull's outhought
गेटिंग दमारी बिल्डिंग
The bull's outhought
नाट्ट
Brothers, God is not against of that
पिल्लार बुत्तमेटुकुन्द देवुड़ वाटिकी विरोध मेंका
But Jesus says
कन यस प्रभु चेप्तुनाड
सिक्की फर्स्ट किंग डब
आइते मधतकाना राज्यानी नानी तिनी वत्कान्दी
His righteousness
आयन नीतिन वत्कान्दी
Then all these things shall be added
अप्पुड़ अवन्नी निकी वाबर्दत अनि चेप्तुनाड
Brothers, if you will depend upon God
युगानक देवुड़ में आदरपड्डे
Because of faith
मान अविश्वासन बट्टी We are just having our mind upon getting money and money and money उस्स अनि अविश्वासन बट्टी नी मानसा दब्बुमेदा वाटिमेद उन्द चु
Jesus Christ told us
कन प्रभु मानक चेप्पयार
Look to the sparrows at the
आयन अकाश्स त पक्षुल छोड़न अन्न अन्न
He is the same God who will take care of his children
आ पक्षुल पोशिस्तन अदेत युगान्न पोशिच्छिले द
But we God, so much I believe
आइते मल्ला उन्न समस्य अंदांते चाला अविश्वास
But, but, friends, brothers, trust in God's word
ओ मान अनु पिल्लार में देवुण वाक्यन नम्म द
Who took care of twenty, although, lakshmi people forty years
अरण्यमलो यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी नालपे समोच्छाल पोशिंचिन्दे अवर
What a ready ball
अकड़े उन्न पद्दा माल उन्या
Are so many barns filled with wheat and all
अकड़े नन्न पद्दा पद्दा आ दान्यप कुट्टल उन्या नालपे यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी
Where they are going to the factory of schools and colleges and
यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी पोशिच्छिलानिकी फैक्ट्री लोकेली मोत्तम बस्ताल बस्ताल इस्कोस्तनार
Where they are going to buy the clothing
वेलिपय वालकोसो अदपर द बटल कुन्न कुन्न बटल सापलेर पड्यो
They are searching the shoes, okay, shoes
अरे यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनीकी पुडु सू एकड़ देवाले चप्पुल एकड़ देवाले सापलेर टुप्पड्डार
Watch anybody going to the hospital
एवरान एलिपय हास्पिटल एकुन नित्कार
Brothers, you see that
चोरण चोरण पिल्लार अकड़ देवुण हस्तान चोरण देवुण क्रपण चोरण
When God redeemed them
देवुड़ इप्पुर एत अनि विमोचिच्छड
It is good that he never taken these twenty lakshmi people from the city, from Gunthur and Bombay and Hyderabad
देवुड़ चाला स्तोत्रम पिल्लार यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी मंच मंच Gunthuru, Mumbai, Punnuru लांडी पट्टाल दौर नडिपिस्सल वाली आड़बुल्ल नडिपिच्छड देवुड़
God took them in the wilderness
देवुड़ वालानी निर्माणुश्मन यादालु दिसकेल अपिल्लार
Where they will never get the burger
आमीन इंदिकेंड एकड़ उन्दे गानक बर्गर लियन अडुताउन्तार
Or a KFC oriented
अडुतार प्रभु गुंटुल लो KFC अकड़ुन्द प्रभु इद एकड़ उन्दु प्रभु
Let me take them There will be not a hospital
कन इसन कन दक्करलो वक्क हास्पिटल गोड उन्न गोड यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी
No doctor, no nurses
वक्क डॉक्टर गोड वक्क नर्सन गोड
I see you
वक्क आइसी सेंटर गोड उन्न गोड
God took them forty years
आणि अत्तान्ड छोट आलपे सक्कल दिसकेल देवुड़
Now, I want to ask you
नेनु अरगालकुन्दा मेमल ईरोज़
Where these twenty lakh people they had a kitchen
आ यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनीकी एकड़नु नयपे पद्दा किच्चन
Sisters were very happy
निजानिकी चप्पल अंड यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिनी आ सिस्टर्स चाला हैप्पीगम
But in the land of Egypt
इंदिकेंड अदेस सिस्टर्स अयगुप्त उन्न अपुड
They had to labor and labor
पति रोज़ अवन्डाल ईदन चुकोवाल
And they also
मगवालु गोड रोज़ इंतो पंजेसी अलिष्पय अत्तर
So many people were seeking
असल आ पंजेसी पंजेसी वच्च अलिष्पय नडुल्ल पुलो केल्ल पुलो काल्ल पुलो
But God came
आइते इप्पुर एत देवुड़ चेयाड
He said now your trouble is over
अनाड़ अम्मा नी समस्य लाइपयन अनाड़
Follow me
अनाड़ नन्न वेम्बडिच्छन अनाड़ सिस्टर्स
They started following
अनाड़ प्रभु प्रभु वन वेम्बडिच्छन चराल
Maybe they might be asking
अडुता वक्त उच्च अडिगुन्न उच्चाल
Ah, Mo, Moj
अनाड़ मोजे
What about medicine that bottle is there?
Medicine
Let me buy the medicine from there
मोजे उच्च अडुताउन्द अच्छु प्रभु मारी इंतम मंदिन दिसकेल तनान गद मारी एक कुट्टम मंदिल गुनाल प्रभु
Let us bring the little rations
यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिन अर्थन रिकाब But चिन्न रेशन्स अबाउट बेट्ट द
Moj said don't take anything
आय सॉरी मोजे कोत्तमंद चेप्पु उन्द अच्छु
I watch you, God will provide
He told me सॉरी मोजे कोत्तमंद चरान यरवेल लक्ष्यल मंदिन एल्टन नागद कुन्न पेटुकुन
Are you
आइते मोजे अंत उन्न आडु
What happened?
एव्य आवस्तुन्द अंत उन्न देव वेतिकी आप, आप कमिंग आउट अब्द अल्लेवलु कुन्न अयगुप्त चेलिपोतन अपुड कुन्न मंदिलु कुन्न बटलु कुन्न सामालु अन्नी पैक जेस्कुन्द पोदावन कुन्न उन्न कन मोजे मात्र एम बटुग राव्यद उन्न अन्न
Why, why they are asking Why we are following this man?
आ प्रभु बार लडुतान बर्त्तन एंड एम प्रभक्त आयन एम दिसकुन्न राव्यद उन्न
We got one of the children
अनाड़ के मंदिन पिल्लल उन्न आ इंतो यथ्र
The man was saying I don't understand
मगवाड़ इंटेजमानु चेप्तुन्द आपनाक एवर तंग अट्लेद
But our prophet told by
आयन ना प्रभक्तन नेनु नम्मचन नान
He is telling that God said I will not leave
आयनिक देवुड़ चेप्पयाडु मामले वेटमन नेनु नेनु नम्मचन नेनु नेनु नम्मचन
It was very difficult
वाबुस्त आरोज़ सिस्टर्स के चाला कष्टंग उन्न अत्तन जस्त
Do not understand but believe the prophet
Charcher Night time Ratri potadi They were thinking now what to eat and what Anukunna ratri potai Mararani Telari paristiti Enti Sekataga Next one Telari My God never gave them the dosa No dosa Varu anukunadu Telari varu Idli Dosha No idli dosha Idli dosha Leval Kode Ah that is the man's food Varu anukunadu Devu Varu anukunadu Idli dosha Bible says Alu Bible chepthundi God said forget about the man's food Varu anukunadu Idli kaval Dosha Devu anukunadu Adhi manu Tine Adhi kaadu Niche Food you eat and use A manu Tine Tintana Tintana Uda Sometimes you get a digestion Konisa Tinnapudu Aragathu Koda Sometimes get diarrhea Konisa Tinte Bahag diarrhea Some get a gastric Konisa Kadupu gas padta I want to tell you God said that I will give you Devu anukunadu Such kind of food Hitu manti Poyjeran That your father grandfather Asala hitu manti Poyjeran Ni manalo Tata Muthatal Tine Ahar Metan Bible says Aijay lakhan chepthundi God brought angels' food Hallelujah Devu Manu Tine Devu Tootal Tine Varu God brought the angels' food Tootal Tine Raipad Ahar Valdisko Beter I want to ask you Nenamutunadu Whether you want the angels' food Iroj koda Dootal Ahar Yeh Ahar Burger Ee burger Ivika Tine Ahar KFC KFC What you want the angels' food Nikhi Tootal Ahar Ivika Brothers, we can see Ona sodra Sodri Kanipradu Food they ate Yantoo chethu Varu Tootal Tine Never been late Chusara Never been late for a breakfast Ah choddi Pilara A tootal Tine Ahar Tintana[719.64]
If the wave is coming Papa, we will come to you. Ten winter high. We will come to you. God was at the stand out twenty. He will be there. So that is a message of grace. That is mercy. In the time of Noah, God thought that I will be strong. No, he will not. And the Bible says. He will not. But Noah, by faith, he built the ark for the neighbors. Noah, with his worship. Did he build the ark? Had she built the ark for the neighbors? Did he build the ark? No. No. For whom? Who built the ark? Read the scripture. He will not. Noah built the house for his, for his house. He will build the ark. You can read that one. He will not. By faith, Noah being the war of God, of things not seen as yet, wood with fear, prepared an ark. His worship was done by Noah. He saw the ark. He saw the ark. He saw the ark. He saw the ark. For his house. He saw the ark. We can say this is the time now. He will not. It is not the time for us to look at somebody. He will not. Oh, that, that, that family is not good. He will not. He will not. That pastor is doing that. He will not. That pastor is doing that. It is not the time for that. He will not. When the destruction is come. He will not. It is Noah. He will not. Built the ark for his house. He will build the ark. And then where he sees the vision. He will not. By faith, faith is the revelation. He will not. His worship was done by Rabbi Bokrata. His worship was done by Rabbi Bokrata. What is the revelation? What is the revelation? The Bible says. He will not. With a great fear. The Bible says. His worship was done by Rabbi Bokrata. With a great fear. He will not. What fear? He will not. He's seen in a vision. And he saw the ark. No, that, that floor and that. He saw the ark. Destruction was going to come. He saw the ark. He saw the ark. Hundred and twenty years later. He saw the ark. But before coming, the sun coming strong. He saw the ark. He saw the ark. God taught him spiritual life. He saw the ark. And he saw the terror. He saw the ark. He saw all the water and the. He saw the water. He saw the water. He saw the water. People are screaming for love. He saw the water. Save us, save us. He saw the water. He saw the water. He saw the water. He saw the water. If you don't see, you will not have a fear. He will not. But when you see something. He will not. Yeah, get that fear. He will not. And this prophet Noah. My faith is that, that is the revelation. His worship was done by Rabbi Bokrata. What is sure though? He saw the ark. He saw the ark. He got a fear. He saw the ark. And he said. He went. Called his wife. Called his three sons. Called his daughter. Called his daughter. They had a prayer meeting. Prayer meeting. Then he said. He said. My children. He said. I've seen something. He saw the ark. I've seen something. He saw the ark. And then what shall we do? He said. God told me. He said. Build the ark. He said. Build the. He said. The Bible says. The Bible says. Build the ark. His worship was done by Rabbi Bokrata. He was a prophet. He was a prophet. What about his wife? He said. She also believed the prophet. He said. What about his three sons? He said. They also believe the same. He said. The law, they believe the same person. He said. They cannot see, but they can believe that. He said. He said. So all the children, they said, yes, Papa. He said. Yes, Papa. He said. We believe that God, God showed you. He said. We will tell the people. He said. Now what to do? He said. We have to tell the people also. He said. We will tell the people. He said. But first we must start working. He said. He said. Without the work is dead. He said. So how many people they believe Noah's message? He said. Those who believe it. Only they will say. He said. And then Noah said that children. He said. You believe that? He said. He said. Let us go to the wood. He said. He said. Take your actions. He said. Take the sword to cut. He said. That is a faith express. He said. He saw the ark. And when they started bringing the wood and cutting. He said. He said. They were swam the elephants. He said. They were seeing the tigers. He said. He said. He said. He said. But what God says? He said. He said. He said. And I will say two, 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 two. He said. He said. There was a big herd of the elephant. He said. Noah prophet said. He said. Can you see all the elephants? He said. He said. Papa. He said. Now you are telling to just in the ark to put Sabbath compartment for the. He said. He said. But can we make five hundred compartments? He said. He said. He said. Noah said. He said. He said. He said. Only two. He said. He said. But Papa, if five hundred will believe the message. He said. He said. That I don't know. He said. He said. They are predestinated, predestinated. He said. He said. All they can. He said. And this is every God's show. He said. You may preach and you may teach and tell them, but they won't come. He said. He said. But those who are supposed to be saved. He said. God will, when the time comes, he will pray. He said. There we can see. They were just going in the wood. He said. Breaking the wood. He said. Putting the butter in their. He said. They were busy, busy, busy. He said. They, they never kept their access and, and sitting down. Oh, Papa, we believe the message. He said. He said. He said. He said. He said. The embassy, they believe the message. You must be in the act. He said. He said. Show your act, show your faith. He said. He said. They have been here hundred and twenty years. He said. Where they used to get a tire. He said. They were not, not taking the rest. He said. They said. We will go to our uncles' place. He said. He said. Who will go to Mama's place? He said. I, we can go there, here, there are so many relatives. He said. And when they were just going. He said. They were just sitting. He said. And Noah's sons were saying. Uncle, uncle. He said. You know that. The whole world is going to be drawn up. He said. He said. He said. She got told. He said. And better you come to the mission. He said. When the ark will be ready, you come. He said. Brothers, sisters. He said. How many days he was preaching or how many months or how many years? He said. Hundred and twenty years. He said. How many messages he preached? He said. How many thousand messages he preached? He said. How many messages he preached? He said. Short message. He said. Five minutes message. He said. But that was a big, big. He said. That was a, that was a big message. He said. He said. Five minutes message. He said. But big message. He said. That is what to be get saved coming down. He said. He said. How many years he was preaching? He said. Hundred and twenty. He said. Hallelujah. Relatives, we are coming. He said. Every time that Sandeep is preaching the same message. He said. Eight times, eight times. He said. Something. He said. He got some kidney problem. No, but that was not. Brain, brain. He said. He said. He got some problem. He said. After going. He said. They will say, okay, Noah. He said. I, 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 all that five. We will come, uncle, we will come. He said. We will come, ah, we will come. He said. 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 Uncle, we will come. He said. We will come. He said. We got a burden of our soul. He said. That two fellows. He said. He said. May just God just help them and do some work in their heart. He said. He said. Hundred and twenty years. He said. And other places, they were the sons of God also. He said. He said. Nobody would come to Noah. He said. Because they are saying, we are sons of God. He said. He said. We are sons of God. He said. God will talk to us also. He said. But they were just going somewhere. He said. They said. They have seen the daughter of God. He said. They were very fair and good looking. He said. At this time also. He said. Beautiful. He said. Good looking. He said. I came in a flight. He said. I want to tell you. He said. That nice looking, fair girl. He said. They spoiled their faces, put here something. He said. He said. I want to tell you. He said. It was looking something ugly. He said. Only the, only the foolish people, they will fall in that, that. He said. Nowadays. He said. Not in this area, not in Andhra. He said. Bombay. He said. He saw. Everywhere the washing, washing machine. He said. Washing machine. To wash the clothes, you need the washing machine. He said. But for the women. He said. Even in America, in all countries. He said. They don't use the washing machine. He said. Their clothes can't be washed in a mixer. He said. He said. You see that? He said. Their clothing. He said. I'm telling that truth. He said. Where the world is going. He said. Where the world is going. He said. God is not having this sons of God. They were just having that. He said. He said. They're telling that. He said. He said. He said. He said. Noah. He said. Children, please. He said. Working. He said. He said. Hundred and twenty years. He said. What a great message. He said. For the believers. He said. That message cannot become old. He said. He said. That message, eight times, that was. He said. The believers will never get tired. He said. And they wanted to hear it again. He said. Hear it again. He said. Hallelujah. So we can see that Noah was busy, family. He said. And finally. He said. He said. Ark was ready. My time is over. He said. The ark was ready. He said. And prophet told. He said. It's two messages. He said. One is God of this city. He said. I'm sorry, standing in the gap. He said. And the souls that are giving praise. He said. That Noah's ark was Noah's third pool. He said. Third pool is the final message. He said. That final message, hard put, the cap. He said. Before the destruction. He said. God wanted to destroy the whole. He said. But what a message of grace. He said. They did not do anything. He said. They did not bring the wood. He said. They did not just sweat and just do some work. He said. Third pool was ready. He said. He said. I mean. Is it difficult? Only to just come and going. Just a wall of cotton. I will explain it. Yeah, yeah. So what a cotton. He said. He said. He said. Simple, happy. He said. He said. People that think that to be shared, we have to do so. He said. No, we have to just clean ourselves and wash ourselves and. He said. God says. He said. Can Ethiopian change his skin? He said. He said. Or can a leopard change his? He said. Hallelujah. And that leopard probably doesn't like his color. He said. All spots. He said. That probably if the leopard seen some advertise now. He said. That is, that is the best detergent powder. He said. He said. He said. Take it in the water and just put it away. He said. Because that lepers, I don't like. He said. Because I see that advertise. He said. He said. When he went over there and. He said. That front of the mall. He said. He said. Take it, this is very good. He said. He said. Just put it water and just. He said. All your spots will be. He said. He said. Where he went to the. He said. Very happy. He said. All by sea. He said. Because I have purchased that. He said. I'm going to sit and watch. He said. Because that is the advertise. He said. Just dip it and clean. He said. He said. He said. He said. And he brought that product. He said. And he brought his wife, honey. He said. Today I'm going to clean off. He said. He said. He said. He said. What you brought? This is the best one. He said. I brought it for you.[1331.98] अलावर यावण एम दिच्चे अंत, इधिगो सेस्टमयन सरपो, मन पाथरले अक्का मुरिकी मोत्तक शनले पोगोटती.
Only just.
इधिगो लुपिच्ची दाले रोड तेक रुद्धा कड़कुन ना, इंतावसर लेद.
In a bucket.
जस्ट बकेटलो अक्का चोके इ, अला मुंचू मोत्तक तालताल आड़िपोते, नामने कोत्ता प्रोडक्ट.
All our place are greasy.
असल दिसेवा, मनकंता आ मन प्लेटले निटके द नून अंत कुंदे, सरिकनु कड़कड़ीन अंत पॉटले द. निन कोट्टा याडलो दिसन अंत आया.
He's a proud about very happy.
अन्ना ब्रह्मांगरी भारी मेडा ब्रह्मांगर.
What, what does that mean?
आ अलावर दिसतुन येन दिन निजमेन आनी.
I'm looking how he's going to.
आयन अम्मो इस कोट्टा द करुकुन अंत अंत, अलावर मुंचिसकर पाथरले नी. ऐसा इकरा निपेसी, अन्ना लिक्विड इन द वाट, आ बकेटलो मोत्तो, आ दिच्चन आ आपुच अंत लिक्विड.
He said, now you see.
दिसेवा इन्सोंतो कड़कुतुन अंगाने लो कड़कुए इप्पुर अंत आया.
That one he does that.
यन एल्ली पोयी, अत्युद्धा नीलबोस टिप्पड़ अंत, आ पाथर दिसकुन अंत, मुच्चा अंत. दिसेवा सेकल न मारी पोय अंत अंत.
Put that one.
मुच्ची लेपड़ अंत, तेन टाइम्स. लेपगन अलागे उन्नांत, अदेट मल्ली दिसे अंत, मल्ली मुच्चे लेपड़, पदिसार लेपड़ अंत.
Oil wouldn't go.
इन्नी सार लेपड़ अंत अंकुंन आयल पॉटले अंत.
We cannot clean ourselves.
पिला राजा, अला मौसन जिसे सरपो तम्मोस्पोकन दिगाने, मनल मनो दें तोन कड़कुरे मन पापन पोगोटकुले पिला राजा.
That Bombay leopard tried for eight years.
आ बॉम्बाई चेर्ता पुली, यन अबे समोचरालु, मच्चल पोगोटकुन नाव ट्राइड जिसकुने.
Brought the best detergent.
बेस्ट सरपो दिचकुने, मच्चे सरपो. एल्ली पोयंदी, नदिलो कल्पकुन तिन, निन बागोत्तन नदिलो नदिलो पोयंदा.
All by spots will be gone.
अंदुले केले कल्पकुने ना मच्चल निपोत्यन कुंदा.
All this black spot I don't like.
इन अल्ला मच्चल लाख नच्चले कुंदे.
I put that detergent.
इन्नी सार ले कल्पकुन्ना, इन्नी सार ले कल्पकुन्ना.
That one all it was.
दिसुकुने, चेतलमें द बोसकुने, केन्ना बोसकुने.
All four.
मोत्तक पोस्ट राका, अदिट्टैटे कोटे सरिकनु नुरुगंता पटिन नानी.
That four was looking.
आ नुरुगुता पोट दिसुकुने, आह, नुरुगु पटिन अंत, केन्ना मच्चा पोय नारु कुंदा अंत अंत.
After taking water and.
आ मल्ला फोटुकुने, फोटुकुने क्लागी, पदिसार इट्टैटे केले कोटे दिसुकुन अंत. तरवाता बैठ कोच्चे.
Black, black spot were most shining.
इनकान अड़ा, अदि कड़कुटा तरवाता नल्ला मच्चा इनकान अल्ला केरपर्टन अंत पिला राजा.
It is very simple.
चाला सुलुप पिला राजा.
Just believe, only believe.
नु एम चेसन नी पापन पोगोटकुने, केवलो नमुचाल.
He did it all.
आयन नी कोनको सिल्वलो पुचालचना, अदि नमुचाल.
And Calvary, he's unfinished.
कल्वर नाड़, अदिवा समाप्त वाइपोय अंत आयन आयन.
Only believe.
केवलो नमुम अंड़.
Brother, she said that they did not just do anything. Only when the R was ready.
अल्या दिसेरा बलक, चिम्मर केंत सुलुवायन वर्तमानो, वाड़ मोत्तक कट्टबड़िद, केवलो नम्मलो पुकोस्ते चाल. इंत सुलुवायन वर्तमानो.
He was, God did everything and even they don't want to come.
देवड़ अन्नी चेसी सित्त पर्ची मोत्तक कट्टी अंत रेडी जिसना गुड़ा, तेस्ट वोच्ची राह, लॉन्ग कोच्चन से रक्षित बढ़ा देगोड़ा.
But finally we can see that.
इंत दारुन चिम्मरगा.
Oh, the door was open.
चिम्मरगा देवड़ चूसी चूसी, आ वाड़ द्वारानु गुड़ मुशेसी.
That door is open.
मुड़, सॉरी, आ चिम्मरकी वाड़लोकी वेल्टानिक द्वारानु तिरिश्याड़.
Only believe.
कबिश, यवरो नमुतार रणन जप्पि द्वारु तिरिसो ओपन जिसाड़ देवड़.
Probably no, his family, they will singing the song.
नवा कुटुमरकुन उन्नोचे, इप्पुर देवड़ वाड़लो काहुआन बेटे अड़, चालमन वस्तुन पाटल पाटन अंत अंत.
Come, auntie.
अंडी, कोटल साट रणी.
Animals started coming.
कोत्तमन तग्गरदा कोच्चरु, एलिफेंट, जोडी कमी. आइते यवरो चेन अंत पिला राजा, वाले चिप्पर वाले बंदुल उरा अल्ये कोन से पैन आज दिसते, रुण येनुगुल जानता उच्चन अंत, इत्तुक नड़ूसुकुंता.
Giraffe started coming.
जेराफी नड़ूसुकुंता उच्चन अंत.
Donkeys started coming.
गार्डन नड़ूसुकुंता उच्चन अंत.
Monkeys coming.
कोथल नड़ूसुकुंता उच्चन अंत.
But not the people.
आइते पाप माला, अनुकुन नटुगा, पाप मनुसल अवर राले कोयर पिला राजा.
Who is a better message believer?
यवरो निकम सेस्टमयन वर्तमान विस्वास पिला राजा कड़ा, आ प्रभक्तन नम्मिन देवर नम्मारू.
Brother Brian, it is home.
आयन गुड़, ब्रह्मांगर गुड़ आयन इंटलो.
One animal is just like a small fox, like a call that oppose.
अरोज़ उका, आणि इंटलो पलकी, अप्पोस मन अमेरिका लो जनतुल उन्ते, कंगारु लाग उन्ते, आ जनतु आइंटी कोच्चिन बागोन अपुर.
That was very sick.
अदि अलिसी पोयी, सॉरी, अदि बाग गायन तो ताला पैगिली पोई, चिंपट्टुन.
Came from a jungle to profit.
अड़गुलो नुच्ची उरलो न्ने दाटकुने आयन इंटलो कोच्चिन नाची.
To be safe, to be, to be here.
अदि वोची, आयन तो प्राद्धिंचकोड़ा निकोच्चिन अंक जनतु.
What about the man?
चुन पिला राजा, वो जनतु सैव कुड़ देगर की पादन कोस वच्चने, पादन बागे.
Two started.
चुट्टीपकलो मनुसल ताले कोयर.
What, who do they started coming?
दिसेरा, इकड़ा नवा को न मनुसल नम्मला, दिसुल नम्मस्तन.
People, they were so flying.
पजले इंत कुटिवारे पोया राजा.
They were so flying.
इंत कुटिवारे पोया राजा.
When the animals started coming.
आ जनतुल उस्तन अप्पड़ू.
Noah did not go to bring them.
चुरण नवा को वाल्ड कॉस वेल्लेद पिला राजा.
Noah did not bring them, okay, you must come.
नवा एल्ली पोई, इधिगो इन गुप्पलो, इरुण्य अंकुल रणी, ये जनतु जेराफी वाटले दिसकर आटला.
You must come.
इधिगो इरुण्य गार्डन रणी, अप्पत गार्डन चोपोटकुन उच्चकुन दिसकर आटला आयन आयन.
I got putting the trap on a lion.
इधिगो आ सिमहांकोसो, वोका उच्चे सी, आ उच्चलो सिमहान पट्टी, दान अपुर दिसको चकड़े एट्टला दिसेरा.
Something was happening.
आ हृदयालो योद चरुकुतुन ना सिमहाल की पुल्लुक पिला राजा.
They, they.
वाटिके वोप्पच्चे बड़ी, अवे नड़ूसुकुंता आ वाड़लो कोस्तान उने पिला राजा.
All of them, they came.
अवन्नी लॉन्ग कोच्चन आ तरवाता.
Seven days nothing happened.
अवन्नी लॉन्ग कोच्चने, आयन आगानी येट्टू रोज़ल पाट एमचे जरगला, बाइबल जप्तुने.
I think that.
अपुरू, I may be wrong, but I think that. कोत्तमन अलुकुंता उन्ना.
Noah's children was thinking, Papa.
बौस अन्ने ललुकुटन अंत तप्पक आवच्चा तेरी दिगाने, नवा कुडुकुल बौस अल्लार्ड उन्नोचे मो.
All three, all they came, but we also came.
अन्नाड़ उच्च नाना, नु चिप्पिनट्टो, सरे मनुसल राले द, जनतुल न्ने उच्चने इ, मनवाइते वच्चा मो, देवड़ द्वारंग वड़ मुशेदो, मर आयन आगानी.
Why don't you?
मर नु यवर?
Close the door.
सरे, मर नु वेंदुको तल्पु मेले द.
Why don't you close the door?
सॉरी, येट्टू रोज़ल तल्पु मेले पिला राजा, आ तिरिसन आगानी, येट्टू रोज़ल तल्पु तिसय मंद, अल्या कुडुकुल डुता उन्ना, नाना अंदर वोच्चे से, मर येनुकु मेले द.
Son.
अन्नाड़, नाकुमारुड़ा.
Because that, our neighbor had told them, I will come.
अंदिकन ते, मन प्रभु चप्पु उन्नाड़, आयन वस्तान अनी, आयने दान मुशेस्तान चप्पु उन्नाड़.
And my friend, they also had promised.
सॉरी, 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 नवा कंता सारी पिला राजा, अच्छा मेंचन, नवा कु, अल्या लॉन्ग कोच्चन आ गुड़ इनका येट्टू रोज़ल पाट वेट चेसेड़. वाले पिला येनुकु नान इनका तिरिसावंते, नवा कंता अंत, पक्किन टाइम चप्पड़ा, वस्तान उन्नाड़, आयन कोसम कोकरोज़ छोद्दा, अल्या कोसम को रुण रोज़ल छोद्दा, अनी, वाल्लोस्तार यमु, विल्लोस्तार यमु नानी, इनका येट्टू रोज़ल कन्नी पिट्टा अंत आयन.
Waiting and waiting.
इनका यद्र चुस्तनारी, इनका यद्र चुस्तनारी.
Bible says.
पक्किन बाइबल जप्तुने.
God waited for him.
देवड़ वारी कोनको यद्र चुस्या डटका.
It doesn't really want to be.
इन्दिकन यवर नसिच्चे अंत चेता कादु कनक पिला राजा.
Seven days nothing.
येट्टू रोज़ल, आयन आय वर राला, एमचे जरगला.
Probably Noah was thinking, somebody will come.
नवा कनकुनाड़, इनके अवर नावस्तार यमु, इनके अवर नावस्तार यमु.
Such a message of grace.
इंत कृपा वर्तमानो, सुलुगा रक्षित बढ़े वर्तमानो.
But they spared the mercy of.
आयन वार कृपन कालगनु कुनार्पिदा.
At the door was closed.
चिम्मरकु देवड़ ची, आ द्वारानु मुशेवरकु, वाल्लू कृपन कालगनु कुनार्पिदा.
His spirit was thriving.
बाइबल जप्तुने, देवुने आत्म नरुलो तो, अदित्तन जस्ते.
Every day, it was thriving.
पत्ती रोज़ उप मनुसल तो देवुने आत्म वादिस्सुन अंत.
How much grace did he?
नारी प्रेना रणी, इप्पुरेना रणी अनी, देवुला आत्मवार चुसरे इंत कृपा.
But finally the door was closed.
वारी की इंत कृपका वालो, अंत देवड़ चाड़, चिम्मरकु देवड़ द्वारानु मुशेस्याड़.
One thing I like.
नाकड़को विष्ण नच्चिन द पिला.
Noah built the ark for his house.
बाइबल जप्तुने, नवा कु तन इंटी वारी रक्षणकोरकु वाड़लो सित्त पर्चुकुने.
And they supported the prophet.
दिसेरा, वाल्लू आ प्रभक्त के नम्म सपोर्ट जिसेर पिला राजा.
Because they believed from them.
इन्दिकन ते, वार आ प्रभक्तन नम्मार पिला राजा.
So, don't only just believe the prophet, prophet, prophet.
वाले प्रभक्ता, प्रभक्ता जप्पि नवा कनु, वार चप्पटमेगा द, आणि चिप्पिन नान नम्मी क्रियलो चुपिच्चा.
All of us, so we will just do something.
मनम गुड़ अलागे चेता मा पिला राजा. Hallelujah, hallelujah.
May God bless you.
देवड़ ममला दीविच्चन गाका.
We will pray that Lord, you just do something for this all.
बौस, मनम प्राधन चेयचु प्रभा, अंदन दर्शिंचु, अंदन रक्षिचु, अंदन खापन प्राधन चच्चु.
That nobody should perish.
मन प्राधिन चले कोड़ा, यवर नसिच्चे कोड़ा दवानी.
Noah built the house.
आइते लेखन जप्तुने, नवा कु तन इंटी वारी रक्षणकोरकु वाड़लो सित्त पर्चुकुने, येट्टू रोज़ल एमचे जरगले द.
Noah was asked by his sons.
नवा कुडुकुच्चे दाले का बट्टाड़ो.
Papa, how long you?
नाना इनके अंत काल में यद्र चुस्ताओ.
It is three days past.
मुड़ रोज़ल आयपैनी.
Four days past.
नाल रोज़ल आयपैनी.
Six days past.
आरोज़ल आयपैनी.
Seven days past.
येट्टू रोज़ल आयपैनी.
Papa, why you are?
नाना इनका येनुके यद्र चुस्ताओ, बेडला डुता उन्ना नवा कने.
So, maybe someone will come.
नवा कन्नाड़, इनके अवर नावस्तार यमु राजा, इनके अवर नावस्तार यमु.
God bless all of you.
देवड़ ममला दीविच्चन गाका.
Believe the prophet's message.
प्रभक्तन नम्मण्डे, वर्तमान नम्मण्डे.
God's message.
देवुने वर्तमान नम्मण्डे.
God said, I will send Elijah.
देवड़ अंडा इहवा निमिच्चन, बैंक्रमन महादिन राकमुन, प्रभक्तन येलियान नम्म पब्बचान.
Believe the message from all your.
नी पूर्ण हृदयमल उच्च वर्तमान नम्मण्डे पिला राजा.
And we will start doing work.
आ दान क्रियलो पिट्टान्डे.
Faith and Kriya.
विस्वासन क्रियलो पिट्टान्डे पिला राजा.
God bless you.
देवड़ ममला दीविच्चन गाका, हल्लुया, हल्लुया, अंदर चप्पट गुड़ दाम पिला राजा, हल्लुया, हल्लुया, हल्लुया. आयन भाई पिट्टिन अंत पिला राजा, आ दर्शन आलिकी, भाई पड़ी पोया राजा. By faith, Noah feared the wrath of God. चालमन विस्वासमंत, अप्पुत्ताल सुच्चकिल स्वस्थतनु, कुन्नयन कुंता, बाइबल जप्तुने, विस्वासन द्वारा नवक भाईमेसिंदी. आणि देवुने बुग्रतन चुस्याड़, राबोत्तन तीर्पुन चुस्याड़, इरोज़ कोड़ा, लोकमेंदकी सारे नीड तो कादुगन, अग्रितो तीर्पु राबोत्तन, इलोकान अग्रितो नासन चेपोत्तन अड़. नवा कु धर्मल वले, मनुसिकुपाट धर्मल अंत अड़. अकड़ा कोट्टलमंदुन नाय, इन्दिमंद रक्षिच्चा बट्टार, नवा कदि चुस्याड़ बुद्ध का, यला पुट्टकुपोत्तनार, यला नसिच्चीपोत्तनार, यला जरगपोत्तन्दो, वुनिकी पोया राजा नचुस्य.